In the office. This is like mad crazy here. Yeah. And Mr. Bridges has a whole team.
If they point out the specific amendments and the specific paragraphs and it's reduced. And, you know, then.
Yes, Mr. Colin. Did you see the, did you see the?
I have not, ma'am.
See the what?
Are you are one of the wisest people that I've ever met. I'm gonna defer to you on this one.
I, what did you not see?
Did he see the?
I haven't looked them over in, in, in detail. I, I know that they came through. Uh, but there was a, you know, they asked me the process and procedure. Uh, I have something in writing, you know, I can print it out. That's technically in writing, but I don't have a complete document. It should be done on the floor. It's also been advertised to the public a different way. So the public should have the benefit of knowing what the changes are. Just, you know, that's a cleaner way to do it. Uh, it's a, uh, it's more polite way for the public to do it. I have no problem doing it however you all want to do it. Um, I did not receive a clean copy that I can into the record or put up on the screen, which is what my problem is.
Yeah, that's what I asked for Mr. Bridges to do.
So I'm sorry, but I asked him for it, you know, if they can, you know, if you want to do piecemeal, we can. That up on the screen, you know, we can work with that. It'll take a couple of minutes, but, you know.
Well, that'll be the end of the docket. Anyway, we can turn our.
Oh, boy.
I also have a new copy of the bond ordinance. Uh, the bond ordinance was amended by Mr. Everett Johnson, so that'd be read into the record.
Okay. I would like to do these housekeeping items first.
Uh, and I also have to ask Ms. Vaughn if she received the information to move, uh, the resolution five eleven to the consent agenda. I don't know if she has received it or not. I don't believe I received it.
Did you receive it?
I do not believe I did, no. I did receive, um, resolutions with regard to, or memorandum with regard to five twelve and five thirteen that said that they basically can't make the changes for the tabling of the condition.
Well, they shouldn't even be on the docket, Mr. Mr. Colin. Because they were tabled and so they should be removed from this docket.
It was awaiting the condition precedent, but if there's gonna be a motion.
The, the condition was for them to have the information by Tuesday. You don't have. Please remove them from the agenda.
Well, they are, they are, they're removed. It's noted in the agenda that they're tabled until the condition precedent is met.
Mr. Colin has on the, the docket tabled pending amendment as condition precedent to remove from table.
In case they come up on the floor during this meeting, I wanted to have them on there so that the public is aware. And the public knows, but it's clearly, I put it in big bold letters, these are tabled until the condition precedent is met. But I do expect some procedural, uh, argument for procedural motion on the floor. Uh, so that's why I did put them in, 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 you know, in anticipation. So this way the public's not confused. We go to them.
No, you, you, you're confusing the council because I'm, I'm not gonna go there, but anyway. You're doing what you want to do when the, 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 the person that tabled them did not untable. And although it was a conversation between us, you know what the rules and the regulations are. Let's get started with the minute. Did you say your bit? And then we'll move right on into opening up the meeting. It's on five thirty-one.
Sure. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the Trenton Council meeting. December second, twenty twenty-one. This time you can keep your devices and remain muted throughout the meeting. It'd be greatly appreciated. If you're on a landline, please dial star six to mute and unmute yourself. If you're on a landline and you wish to speak during public discussion, please dial star nine. All others, please look for the little hands in the actions menu and for the microphone. Uh, you can unmute yourself. Not interrupt the council for any. Uh, we will begin shortly. If you, uh, if you have any comments, please reserve them. Uh, council president will set a time for the public comment at that time and we will proceed from there.
Uh, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Um, this meeting is being called to order. Adquits notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, pursuant to public laws nineteen seventy-five, chapter two thirty-one. This agenda is complete to the extent known and was sent to the Trenton Times and posted on the First Rule Bulletin Board in the City Hall, filed in the city clerk's office and posted on the city of Trenton's website. Formal action will be taken. Mr. Colin, roll call, please.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Blake. Ms. Caldwell-Wilson. Mr. Michelle.
Present.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Present.
Ms. Vaughn. Council President McBride.
Present. There's a call. We may continue.
Yes, ma'am. City Clerk Matt Collin, who's present, Mr. Edwin Cologie.
Present.
Thank you, Attorney Cologie, for listening to the council. Mr. Cruz.
Uh, good evening, uh, present.
Good evening, Mr. Cherry.
I'm present. Good evening.
Good evening. Mr. Liston.
Present.
Good evening, sir. Mr. Bridges.
Good evening, Sally Samuel, on behalf of Director Bridges in the Law Department.
Uh, will Mr. Bridges not be appearing this evening?
Um, he may join us, uh, maybe about seven thirty, but right now I'm sitting in for him.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, Director Wilson.
Present.
Good evening, sir. Director Doug.
Good evening, present.
Good evening, present.
Evening, Mr. Lopez.
Good evening, I'm present.
Good evening. Mr. Terry. Mr. Richardson.
Good evening, everyone. I'm present.
Good evening, ma'am. Mr. Lavender, Director Lavender.
Good evening, present.
Good evening, sir. Mr. Cruz is acting finance director.
Uh, that is correct, yes.
And I have the letter. It was forwarded to council, sir. Thank you, sir. Council President, the directors are here as noted. Would you like me to proceed?
Yes, invocation, flag salute, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Ladies and gentlemen, we can all bow our heads for the invocation. Almighty God, who holds the fate of man and nation, we most humbly beseech thee to bless this our city, these deliberations, and these thy servants, that they may act with wisdom and understanding for the good of our community and thy greater glory. We also ask for people's better spirits to come out during this holiday season and that everybody have a safe holiday season. Ask for a baiting from the ravages. Some protection from the new Omicron variant. Thank you, amen. We can all rise for a flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's Councilman, it's Councilman Blakely.
Noted, Mr. Colin.
Yes, ma'am. Noted for the record. Arrival at five thirty-six P M. Council President, would you like me to proceed?
Yes, I would like to do the housekeeping items first, Mr. Uh, Mr. Colin.
Okay, how would you like to start, ma'am?
I want to start the, um, with the, um, whether or not, uh, I don't know what was asked for under, uh, twenty-one dash five eleven. What was, what was asked for?
Let me get back.
Particular resolution, because they hadn't given us what we asked for.
Yeah, let me just go, I'll, I'll, I have one second. So.
Councilman Harrison.
Subnoted, Councilman.
Thank you.
Hold on one second. Let me just write Mr. Harrison's arrival down in time. Mr. Harrison also at five thirty-six P M. Okay. You're with me? Cause I took specific notes on it. Uh, Ms. Vaughn wanted the timeline and who's been for the studies. She wanted that.
Right, we did not get that from Mr. Douglas's office?
Uh, no, uh, uh, Mr. Andres, uh, Mr. Daniels's office. No, ma'am, I do not believe we did.
Excuse me, I said, Mr. Douglas. I apologize. Alrighty, and so the second, um, housekeeping item.
So that will be, uh, my, my, that will be roll called, ma'am?
Uh, definitely.
Yes, ma'am. So five eleven. Uh, note for the record that, uh, because the condition was not met, it will be.
That, that information is still needed, Mr. Uh, Mr. Uh, Mr. Daniels or Mr. Cruz. That information is still needed for the council.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, and if they can get it together while we're waiting, that would be helpful.
And so the next housekeeping item, um, is the, uh, is the bonds. The bond, um, the repurposing of the bond. Has all the requirements been met for that, for that, uh, for that bond to be here? Has the debt statement been delivered to you? Have the actual, um, information been put into the bond? Whereas that bond had already been repurposed and we were only using a portion of it? Has that been, um, completed?
Uh, yeah, and what, uh, what the bond counsel had said was that this will shoot through the prior amendment. Even though the amendment wasn't recited in the bond, uh, or mentioned in the memorandum for the director. Uh, in twenty twenty would be superseded by the current amendment. As far as the other item that you asked for, I have not received the supplemental debt statement. I must post receive it by the date of introduction, uh, but it has not actually yet been received.
Can we move forward without the debt statement?
Uh, I do not believe so. I believe it's a requirement that the, that the debt statement must be received. Uh, who's saying yes?
Let me go to Mr. Cologie. Mr. Cologie.
Yes, ma'am.
Can we move forward without the debt, uh, the, the, the debt statement?
Be very honest, it's the first I'm hearing about it. I'm gonna have to try to get back in touch with bond counsel, which I'll do, uh, in a moment.
I, I am on the hall. This is Everett Johnson.
Mr. Johnson, okay.
So, Mr. Johnson, can, can we move forward without that debt statement attached to this bond?
Yes, because we're not authorizing debt. We're only admitting the description of an old ordinance without actually borrowing any new money.
Okay. Mr. Mr. Colin.
That's for the record. I'm gonna, I'm, I'm not gonna argue with the lawyer. He's a bond counsel. I just, you know, normally I receive a supplemental debt statement. I didn't. Um, it is, if he says it's not necessary, I don't, definitely defer to Mr. Johnson.
All right, and the third, um, housekeeping item is the, um, is the ordinance. Um, Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson and Mr. Woolke had supported in debt. Uh, they had came up with some, um, minor amendments. Um, but, um, when Councilwoman, uh, uh, tried to reach out to Mr. Bridges, we were unsuccessful in getting that, uh, uh, printed out into black and white for the public and for the rest of the body. So how do we move forward with that, Mr. Cologie?
Well, because of the, you know, the involvement of the amendments to it, it's gonna be difficult to just do it verbally. I mean, it was basically a matter of getting the changes put into a final form on an ordinance document. Quite frankly, it, it left my screen. I saw Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson's communication to the law department and that was the last I, I saw. So I don't know if it was actually done, prepared, or what.
Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson stated that it was not prepared. So what, what, what do we do in this case, Mr. Cologie?
Excuse me, excuse, excuse me. It's gonna be very unwieldy to try to put it all together by way of a verbal amendment. I mean, we can do that if there's a compelling reason to do it tonight. Otherwise, the other option is to hold it off until the next meeting when it's finalized. Uh, you know, whatever council wants to do, we can do.
I would have to refer that to the vice chair. Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson.
Yeah, I, can we, can we amend it verbally? It's not a lot. Um, and move it forward?
He said that is.
We, we could. It's gonna, it'll be up to, uh, Mr. Colin, obviously.
It'd be up to what?
It'll, it'll be up to Mr. Colin to, you know, we'll, we'll have to do like we've done in the past with some verbal amendments. Make sure that we have everything precisely the way we want it.
President McBride? I don't know who that is, but.
Mr. Blake.
Ye- yes, go right ahead, Councilman Blakely.
Thank you, President McBride. I just wanted to, um, ask if we could have a temporary, um, uh, you know, uh, hold this until, uh, the next council meeting. Um, I've been talking to some constituents, uh, and some folks who have some questions. And, uh, I, uh, just think it would probably be best if we could just temporarily hold off on it. Uh, you know, I can have some minor, uh, suggestions and some questions. And I've been receiving, you know, a number of communications, uh, from, uh, my constituents. And I just want to make sure, uh, that, you know, we are being very thoughtful about a very significant, uh, shift. Um, I'm not saying I'm against it or for it. I just would like, uh, you know, some more time to, uh, do that. And for, because the outlines, the amendment process to Mr. Cologie's point is going to be a little difficult with some due to the verbal nature of it. I, I think it would be, you know, best if we had a clean, um, you know, ordinance so that, you know, we had the document in front of us and, you know, we can have some more time to, uh, deliberate over these important considerations. And I would just ask if I could have, uh, that bit of courtesy from the, um, uh, authors of ordinance.
Yes, that would have to come from, um, 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 Councilwoman, um, Caldwell-Wilson. Um, Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson, um, did you hear the, um?
I did, I did. And, you know, there, there's only two changes. As an addition, we're just putting in a statute in one area and we're removing appointed in another area. That's the only changes to it.
Yeah, uh, President, President McBride, can I answer that question? Can I respond to that?
Yes.
Thank you, President McBride. Yeah, I, I think that, um, you know, I've had some conversations. I spoke to, uh, some union representatives. I spoke to some, uh, representatives from the administration. And, you know, I think that there are some questions regarding some of the changes. And I think just having a, a little bit more time, uh, to, uh, really discuss this and determine. I'm not saying that, you know, it should be totally negated or we shouldn't do it at all. I, I'm just asking for, you know, just a temporary reprieve so that, you know, we can make sure that these, um, cause I'm getting like conflicting, uh, information from the administration, from the unions. And I just kind of wanna have the, uh, time and the ability to ask some more questions about this ordinance. And I'm just asking for a two-week reprieve, you know, the next council meeting, it could be on the docket as I have some questions. And also, uh, bring some amendments of my own, uh, to the ordinance if that's needed after some more conversations.
Well, I thought we did all of that on, um, on Tuesday. This is not changing the language. It's only removing the word appointed and it's putting in a statute. That's it. So, I mean, we had led the discussion on Tuesday night about this.
So, Co- Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson, I wanted to share with you, um, that I had gotten since I spoke to you last. In the last, in the last forty-five minutes, I have been on the phone with ten people. Um, I've gotten calls from the, uh, professional, uh, African-American firefighters. I've gotten calls from out my residence. And, um, they are just, they, they're, they're asking me not to vote on it at all. And I wanna, I want to support, um, my councilwoman and, and everything. But I, I would ask you too, if we could just put it off so that, so that we can have a, a, an opportunity to put a clean resolution together and to circulate those changes in this ordinance that you want. And, um, and so that everybody can understand what the changes are, what we're doing. Because they're, they're screaming at me, um, saying that, you know, I let a resolution come on the table that the public, uh, didn't have the opportunity. But the, the Tuesday was the opportunity to, to look at it, but for some reason, they wasn't under, with the understanding of, of the, the, the language in that ordinance. So, um, I'm asking based on the African-American and, uh, 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 um, firefighters' union and some of the firefighters from the, uh, Trenton, uh, city of Trenton, I, I would just ask you if you could please, um, um, let, let it come back in two weeks when we had a chance. And, and, and then let Mr., um, let Mr. Wool come on. And, um, and the, uh, the, in, uh, the, uh, African-American firefighter, uh, a head of their union come on to, um, to at least agree upon these particular, uh, this particular ordinance, because it has seemed to have raised some eyebrows here and caused some, a lot of confusion. So would it be harmful?
Okay, so, okay, so a couple of things, um, these are recommendations. These changes were recommended by Ms. Vaughn. I tried to work with her on that. Um, when, when the fire director came before council, um, I, I asked him about this and he was in agreement. And it's on file. It's on, it's on tape. And, um, we've worked very diligently on it. But rather than put it up and have it voted down, I would be happy to, um, put it off to a later date. But I would just urge all of you to talk to everybody. And I would urge, um, the firemen's unions, Wayne and the African-American firefighters to come on and speak to council about this. And, um, because I've had discussions with the director too. So I'll be happy to do that.
Alrighty, so Councilwoman, well, well, Councilwoman will table it, Mr. Colin. And I, I, I would just like to express to everyone that is on this call, waiting for this, uh, ordinance to come up. We are giving everyone the opportunity to have a discussion here. The councilwoman has worked very hard to put this ordinance together. We are asking you guys that to have this discussion within the next two weeks so that the councilwoman can present this ordinance. So I would hope that, um, Mr. Wool, the, um, the African-American firefighters' union and all that is involved to sit down and go through this ordinance together.
And, uh, Council President, I, I would like to say that I have received no phone calls from the African-American firefighters.
Yes, and alrighty, so noted, Councilwoman. I would like for that to go on the record.
Council President.
Yes.
This is Director Douglas.
Yes, yes, Director.
That's my speaking, council.
Yes, yes, she's already agreed to, to pull it. Did, um, and you, did you want to have a conversation now or do you want to have it, um, with us after this is pulled? I mean, cause she's, she's pulling it.
Okay. All right, I just wanted to speak for the record.
Conversation can take place with Mr. Wool, with the firefighters', uh, uh, you, and with the firefighters' union and with Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson, Councilman Harrison as the sponsor of this. All, all of us could be at the table for that conversation. Are you okay with that, Mr. Douglas?
Council President, yes, I'm okay with that. As just for the record, I'd just like to make a brief statement.
Yes, go right ahead.
Um, Council President, council members, uh, as it relates to, um, the resolution and the changes that's made, um, I was unaware of the more new knowledge of what was written.
I can't, we can't hear you. There's a lot of static, Mr. Colin, Mr. Colin. There's a lot of.
That's fine, ma'am. I have no control over that. I'm sorry about that, but it's, I do not control the internet technology and it's on his end. I'm sorry.
All right, do you hear?
Yeah, we hear you clearly. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I apologize. Um, as for the record, um, as it relates to the resolution that was being proposed, I was unaware when pinned up the paper exactly what was written. Um, so as it relates to that, um, I wasn't aware exactly what was written on there to say if I was in agreement or not.
Alrighty, okay, so is, 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 is the, uh, Councilwoman agreeing to table it until the conversation? But I am asking all of you to have that conversation within the two weeks so that this can go back on the docket. And, and, and that is my request for all that is on this call. Thank you. Um, Mr. Colin?
Yes, ma'am.
You may, um, the, the, um, five twelve and five thirteen, um, the information was not given to you that the councilwoman asked for?
Actually, yeah, it was specifically told that they would not make the changes.
Okay, so then that, that will not be discussed, five twelve and five thirteen will not be discussed. They will remain tabled. Um, Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson is going to table that ordinance. The bond issue will, um, Mr. Everett Johnson, um, made the, uh, necessary changes and told you that it could move forward without a debt, debt statement, because this is not a new debt. And the five eleven, we did not get the information from the, uh, housing economic development director. That information is still needed, uh, for the council. We need to know who's paying for these, uh, studies and how long these studies should take. We need that information. And the third, the, uh, the la- the final item, the house, housekeeping item is the, the, um, the lots. Um, let me see what number those are, uh, Mr. Colin.
It's a resolution oh twenty-one dash twenty-seven scheduled public hearing, see.
Uh, number, uh, yes, twenty-one dash twenty-seven. Um, I would ask for Mrs. Samuels, um, did you get the information from, uh, Mr. Bridges to table that, uh, ordinance until there is to, uh, uh, to, uh, uh, appraisal, appraisers, appraisal done?
Council President, this is Director Daniels. Uh, Council President. President. Appointed, just a pointed clarification, uh, it, it can't be pulled. Uh, it, 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 we would have to adjourn the public hearing to a later date. I just want to go. So whatever happens, it just can't be pulled. It, it would actually have to be, uh, adjourned to a, to a later date.
Okay, so I'm asking, Mrs. Samuels, did you get any information from Mr. Bridges about adjourning this to a later date?
Um, thank you, Council President. Um, I actually did speak with Director Bridges and, uh, who received a statute that I'm very familiar with from, uh, Mr. Cologie. And, um, specifically the statute, um, states that if there is only one contiguous property owner, then the city and that owner, uh, can negotiate the terms of the sale. But when there is more than one, then we have to, it, the, the valuation has to be determined, um, through fair market value, value, which would be an appraisal. I am just finding out from our real estate manager that for one of the parcels, Cece is the only contiguous property owner. But for the other one, there are mo- there are, is more than one contiguous property owner. So we will adjourn it so that we could at least get an appraisal for the one that is in question that has more than one contiguous property owner. Um, and so, yes, um, we have discussed it and we will adjourn the public hearing to obtain that, that, uh, that valuation. Okay, well, yeah, so.
Okay, Miss, Miss Samuels, I heard you loud and clear. Mr. Colin, what were you trying to say?
It's, uh, you, 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 you would have to adjourn the public hearing and it would actually, it's actually your power to adjourn it, nobody else.
Right, right, right. I understand that, but I just wanted to be, I just wanted to make sure that we were communicating with the administration. Okay, because I, I'm trying to communicate, uh, with them so that everybody will be on the same page and everyone will know what is expected when it comes.
Did you want appraisals for both parcels? Cause she indicated them.
Uh, Mr. 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 Mr., uh, Mr. Colin, what I will say at this point on the record, we, we do want appraisals for both, but we're gonna adjourn the meeting, the public portion of this for a definitely a second, uh, the appraisal for the second. of this for a definitely a second uh the appraisal for the second partial of this uh property and we will have a discussion with Mr. Daniels and Mr. Bridges and Mr. Cologie about that first piece of property and that and the value that's been placed on it. So um we can um adjourn this public hearing for twenty-one dash twenty-seven until we have an opportunity.
I'll ask for the motion.
Yes, alrighty.
Yes, ma'am.
Council Council President, this is Director Daniels.
Yes, go right ahead, Mr. Daniels.
Thank you, council president. Um I know uh under housekeeping that uh uh Resolution twenty-one five twelve and twenty-one five thirteen, um they were tabled uh due to uh um council vice president, uh March Caldwell Wilson, asking for specific language to be included in that. Uh ma'am, we are not being um noncompliant uh to council's wishes, uh there are technical and legal reasons um why the scope of or what's directly in the the heading cannot be changed.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes, ma'am.
Then we will have, we will have a conversation about that um because they're tabled and so we will have a conversation about that with you, Council Caldwell Wilson, myself and Mr. Cologie could sit down with you and anyone else, alrighty?
I'm very appreciative, thank you.
They have not been on table, they're still tabled and so we'll have that discussion with you at a later date, all right?
Thank you, ma'am.
Alrighty, so um do I need to make a motion for uh the public uh session, the public portion of this to be moved, Mr. Mr. Collin?
You want to move the public portion up to the front, ma'am?
No, 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 I want to move the twenty-one dash twenty-seven.
Yeah, when we get to the public hearings, unless you, I mean, I I'd rather do both of them together, uh this way it's cleaner for my records and for the docket, yeah, we'll just, I'll just motion to adjourn at that time.
All right, and um.
Adjourn the hearing till anytime thereafter indefinitely, any, you know, however you want it. Uh, you would, so that that's that's your, you're right.
Alrighty, thank you. Alrighty, you may move on with the docket.
Yes, ma'am, next we have communications and petitions is listed on the docket, do I have a motion to approve communications and petitions as listed on the docket. Um, Mr. Wilson, I was second by Mr. Harrison, all in favor of communicating of approving the communications and petitions.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any non-opposed, communications and petitions are approved. Next, council president, we have unfinished business, ordinances, readings and public hearings, would you like me to proceed?
Yes.
Ladies and gentlemen, I now declare open a public hearing for the second reading of public hearing of ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-seven, ordinance authorizing sale of city-owned property. I did fight on the city tax map as one thirty-five and one thirty-nine Morris Avenue, block one six six oh two, lots one and three, pursuant to NJSA forty cafe twelve dash thirteen B five to Fifi Family Enterprises LLC for the sum of forty thousand dollars. I believe there's a motion on the floor to adjourn the public hearing.
Yes, so there is.
President McBride, to adjourn the public hearing to a later date, uh council president, do you want to specify a date or until condition?
Until the conditions are met.
Okay, so adjourned to appraisal in accordance with.
No.
I'm second to the motion.
Second.
I'm second by Miss Caldwell Wilson, I'm gonna call roll call for this, Mr. Blakely? Mr. Blakely is absent. Mr. Collin, Miss Caldwell Wilson?
Yes.
Caldwell Wilson votes aye, Mr. Harrison?
No.
Mr. Harrison votes no.
No.
Mr. Michelle votes no. Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez votes yes, Ms. Vaughn? Ms. Vaughn is absent. Council President McBride?
Go back to uh see if Mr. Blakely is back on the slide.
Mr. Blakely? Council President McBride?
Uh, yes, it's, yes, to uh to to table the um.
To adjourn the hearing, the public hearing is adjourned by a vote of three to two with two members absent. Uh I believe it would have had to been adjourned anyway, I was gonna ask Mr. Cologie for an opinion because in light of the law requiring the appraisal, we can proceed, just for the record. Uh next we have, uh I declare open a public hearing on twenty-one dash twenty-eight, an ordinance authorizing sale of city-owned real property designated on the city tax map as block one 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 oh three, lot two point zero one, NJSA four cafe, twelve dash thirteen B one to the State and Jersey Department of Transportation for the sum of five thousand dollars. Public hearing is now open, ladies and gentlemen, if you wish to be heard during the common public comment period of the public hearing which is now open, please raise your hand and wait to be addressed by the council president for permission to speak. Does anybody wish to be heard for the public hearing of ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-eight? First call. I do have a hand up, Miss Sherri Garrett.
Go right ahead, Ms. Garrett.
Thank you, um councilwoman McBride, council president, um um President McBride and the um rest of the council body. Um again, I have the same question in regards to this property as well, um it doesn't have the, I I read this, yes, I mean, on Tuesday, so I apologize, what's the appraisal for this and what's the square footage? Um I know it's a temporary easement within the city real property, uh is this, is this mark of value for the Department of Transportation, because I think this is enuing, ain't Department of Transportation enuing, I'm not really sure, what is the address on this?
Uh, checking it out, ma'am. I don't actually have a physical address, I just have the block and lot numbers, but I can look that up for you if you'd like to continue to make.
Because I I recall, I looked at this, it did not have an address.
Okay, I will look it up.
Okay.
You can keep going, ma'am, I'll look it up and let you know.
Okay, that's just really it, I just, I I think that this, you know, without enough information on this, again, I had, you know, voiced this uh time and time again, is that when the city of Trenton is selling something, it's giving stuff away and our property taxes are high and um, you know, we were told that it was going to be a flat tax um in regards to our taxes not increasing and they did, seven hundred dollars. So there was no truth to John Fitchway, okay.
Yes, ma'am, that's where it is.
John Fitchway, but does it give a square footage here, is a vacant land?
One point two five acres, ma'am, but I believe they're just getting an easement.
Oh, okay. Say again?
They're being granted and allowed a right to pass through as an easement.
Okay, 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 this is not the property with the church, is it?
I don't know, ma'am, Mr. Daniels can answer that.
Is this the one with the church? Okay, all right, that's just really my concern, you know, I I I just don't want us to continue just be giving property away little to nothing and then, you know, we also lowering their taxes, you know, on top of that, we're giving them a and and whatnot, but I understand the whole aspect of easement, they take on part of a, they're part of the property, they're trying to extend part of their property, they extended a little more, uh one point something feet, but that's my question, what's the appraisal and why wasn't this, you know, more detail given on this on this before it got put on the docket, that's that's about it.
Thank you, Ms. Garrett.
President McBride?
Uh, this is public portion, sir, would you, do you want to?
I, I, no, 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 I just wanted to say that I I could not get in, I can't log in uh for some reason and I'm uh calling in on the phone, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Councilwoman Vaughn is in at present.
I'm I'm here.
I'll note it for the record, ma'am.
Um, council president, this is Sally Samuel, can I add a little bit of information that may satisfy the constituents' concerns?
Yes, go right ahead, Miss Samuels.
Thank you so much. So we did receive an appraisal from the Department of Transportation, um they 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 did a um fair market appraisal, it came out at at five thousand, again, it's a temporary easement, which just gives them the right of way, they would like to create, I think it's it's a retention wall based on the information that was provided and so technically they could just take the property through eminent domain, but eminent domain provides first that they should negotiate the sale, um and so even if they could just take the sale first with the property owner and then if there was like a problem or like say if we did not agree with the um with the appraisal, then they would go through all of the steps um of eminent domain, so they, you know, technically, ultimately, they could just take the easement. Um once we reviewed the appraisal, we found it to be um to be fair, um especially since they're not taking the entire property, they're only asking for an easement so that they can build this retention wall along uh the property line and the question of the constituent.
Thank you. If there's no more, if there's no other uh person for a public comment on twenty-one dash twenty-eight, we will move forward, Mr. Collin.
Yeah, let me, let me poll the audience, ma'am, ladies and gentlemen, does anybody wish to be heard for the public hearing of ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-eight with regard to the easement on John Fitchway? This is the second call, anyone? Third call, does anybody wish to be heard for the easement on ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-eight, the public here, the public portion? Council president, in a motion? A motion, Council President McBride to close the public portion of the public hearing? I'm second, I'm second by Miss Caldwell Wilson, Mr. Blakely, your your vote?
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn? It's just to close public portion, ma'am.
Unmute yourself, councilwoman.
Yes, yes, yes.
President McBride?
Yes.
Seeing non-opposed, all eyes, the public portion is closed, council president, the floor is open to the body, would you like to take questions to the body?
Yes, please. Um seeing no questions, we may continue to the vote.
Yes, ma'am, do I have an introduction for the adoption of ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-eight?
Come on.
I have an introduction by uh for the adoption by Mr. Harrison, I have a second. I have a second by Mr. Michelle, now call the roll, this is for the uh adoption, Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-eight is adopted, will be publicly advertised in accordance with the laws submitted to the mayor, council president, would you like me to proceed?
Yes, please.
Council president, next we have item number seven, new business, first we have resolutions. Um uh if I, actually, we should do the consent agenda first, would you like me to read the numbers for the consent agenda into the record?
Please do.
Yes, ma'am, so let me go through, this consent agenda will include right ordinance is twenty-one dash five twenty-nine and I just want to do read the title of that one, resolution supporting one, making the honor December sixth, twenty twenty-one, community of Lake Davis, Vaughn, I actually, um I wanted to ask you, did you want to co-sponsor that with the other two uh council members?
What is that?
This is woman's space, ma'am.
Oh, yes.
Oh, yes, please.
Okay, I'll, thank you very much.
Yes.
Uh next we have uh resolution twenty-one dash five thirty for the consent agenda, uh we have resolutions twenty-one dash five thirty-eight, twenty-one dash five thirty-nine, twenty-one dash five forty, one dash five forty-two, twenty-one dash five forty-four, twenty-one dash five forty-five. That is the consent agenda, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Come this.
I have a second.
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Blakely, now call the roll, Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
No.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
Resolution carries by a vote of six to one. Hold on one second, let me just get my notes together and I actually want to get these up on the screen if we do. Next, president, we have resolution twenty-one dash five thirty-three. This is a resolution authorizing settlement of civil action in the matter of Annette Perdici versus City Trenton, the total amount of one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Do I have a motion?
Come this.
Go move.
Caldwell Wilson, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Miss Blakely. Council president, would you like me to proceed to the roll?
Yes, definitely.
Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
No.
Council President McBride?
No.
Council president, next we have resolution twenty-one dash five thirty-four. This is a resolution authorizing settlement of civil action in the matter of Charles McKenzie versus City Trenton in the total amount of five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, do I have a motion?
Excuse me, Mr. Collin?
Yes, ma'am.
Bridges, Mr. Bridges was setting this aside and um uh I guess he was tabling it until he uh had given us the expert um the experts' information, that was what was discussed and it should be in your notes, so it should not be approved on twenty-one dash five thirty-four until after that time.
You're absolutely correct, co-council president, we we will be pulling that tonight and um we'll provide counsel with that information.
Okay, my apologies, this is pulled by the administration.
Thank you.
Next we have resolution twenty-one dash five thirty-five, uh hold on one second, yes, twenty-one dash five thirty-five, authorizing transfers to be made by the direct finance of the transition year twenty twenty-one appropriations of two point two seven million, two point two seven seven million dollars. Do I have a motion?
Come this. Go move.
Motion by Miss Caldwell Wilson, I have a second by Mr. Blakely. Council president, would you like me to proceed to the roll?
Yes, please.
Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
I I I I I'm gonna abstain.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
The order of resolution carries by a vote of six to zero with one exception. Next we have resolution twenty-one dash five thirty-six, a resolution authorizing transfer to the direct finance of the transition year twenty twenty-one, water and sewer appropriations of five hundred and nineteen thousand. Do I have a motion?
Come this.
I have a motion, Miss Caldwell Wilson, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Harrison. Council president, should I do the roll?
Yes, please.
Mr. Blakely? Mr. Caldwell Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
No.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
Resolution carries by a vote of six to one. Hold on one second, let me just get my notes together and I actually want to get these up on the screen if we do. Next, president, we have resolution twenty-one dash five thirty-three. This is a resolution authorizing settlement of civil action in the matter of Annette Perdici versus City Trenton, the total amount of one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Do I have a motion?
Come this.
Go move.
Caldwell Wilson, do I have a second? Second by Mr. Blakely. Council president, would you like me to proceed to the roll?
Yes, please.
Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
I I I I I'm gonna abstain.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
The order of resolution carries by a vote of six to zero with one exception. Next we have resolution twenty-one dash five thirty-six, a resolution authorizing transfer to the direct finance of the transition year twenty twenty-one, water and sewer appropriations of five hundred and nineteen thousand. Do I have a motion?
Come this.
Go move.
Motion by Miss Caldwell Wilson, I have a second by Mr. Blakely. Council president, would you like me to proceed to the roll?
Yes, please.
Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
I I I I I'm gonna abstain.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
The order of resolution carries by a vote of six to zero with one exception. Next we have resolution twenty-one dash five thirty-six, a resolution authorizing transfer to the direct finance of the transition year twenty twenty-one, water and sewer appropriations of five hundred and nineteen thousand. Do I have a motion?
Come this.
I have a motion, Miss Caldwell Wilson, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Harrison. Council president, should I do the roll?
Yes, please.
Mr. Blakely? Mr. Caldwell Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn? to the direct finance of the transition year twenty-twenty-one, water and sewer appropriations of five hundred and nineteen thousand. Do I have a motion?
Some of them.
I have a motion, Miss Colwell Wilson, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Harrison. Council President, would you like me to do the roll?
Yes, please.
Mr. Blakely? Miss Colwell Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Um, I abstain.
Mr. Blake? Mr. Blake, we've been marked absent, Council President McBride?
Yes.
Council President, next we have Resolution twenty-one dash five thirty-seven, a resolution of the City of Trenton and the County of Mersey, State of New Jersey, authorizing the submission of an application to the local finance board requesting approval of bond ordinances for the city under the provisions of the Municipal Qualified Bond Act under NJSA forty-eight, cap eight, three dash one, et cetera. Do I have a motion?
Go move.
Motion by Mr. Michelle, a second?
Second.
Second.
Mr. Harrison? Council President, would you like me to proceed to the roll?
Yes.
Mr. Blakely? Blakely's absent, Miss Colwell Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Uh, no.
Council President McBride?
No.
Resolution carries by a vote of four to two with one member absent. Council President, next we have Resolution twenty-one dash five eleven. The city of Trenton undertook a preliminary investigation to determine whether the proposed Stuyvesant Avenue study area qualifies as an area in need of condemnation redevelopment pursuant to NJSA forty colon twelve, cap eight, et cetera. Uh, forty colon twelve, cap eight, et cetera. Uh, Ms. Vaughn, we weren't here early, did you receive the information by any chance from HED um, directly uh, with regard to your question about who is going to be paying for the proposed study?
Uh, no, I didn't receive it.
Okay, uh, Mr. Daniels, do you have that information, Council President, who's requesting that?
Mr. Conlon, can you put that resolution, because I'm looking at five thirty-four, what resolution did you just call?
We're at five eleven, twenty-one dash five eleven. The language has been put in, but on Tuesday, Councilwoman Vaughn asked for the actual um, who's paying for the actual study? And what is the reference time um, that the study will start and be completed?
Thank you, Council President. Um, I sent the, I just recently sent a email down to uh, Mr. Conlon um, stating that the call center is to be determined in uh, calendar year twenty-twenty-two. Uh, timeline to be determined, because at this point um, we're putting this project off into uh, twenty-twenty-two. However, um, understanding the cause and the need, we wanted to go ahead on and get council's uh, approval to do the preliminary study on this. Um, so, those are the two answers to uh, Councilwoman Vaughn's uh, inquiry on Tuesday night. At this time.
Okay, um, oh, I'm sorry, Council President, uh, I'm sorry, um, I didn't, do I have a four or?
No, 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 no. We, we were just asking for the information whether it was, whether it was uh, received or not, so.
Just the record got emailed, did not come in till five fifty-two PM where we were here. So, I didn't see it, Mr. Daniels, I apologize, I just can't do things at once.
So, um, uh, Mr. uh, Mr. Conlon, you can continue with the vote.
Uh, Council President, um, I, but I must say, could I just follow up uh, with Conlon regarding the answer?
Are you on a call?
No, 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 no.
It was, because it was my question, right, I didn't, I never received it, so. And, and certainly, the, the, the reply at five fifteen is unacceptable.
Five fifty-two.
Five fifty-two. Um, and the fact that now they telling us at, at the eleventh hour, right before the vote from the legislative body of the city, that they're gonna put this project off until twenty-twenty-two? I mean, that makes no sense, twenty-twenty-two, the mayor will be potentially, they, you know, there's an election. So I don't, I don't even, if, if they knew this on, if they had information like this on the onset, why is it even on the docket, why was it even presented? Because if it's gonna be presented in twenty, a project's not gonna start in twenty-twenty-two, they had no idea of who the funding source was gonna be. They have no idea of when, you know, they did no assessment of feasibility, feasibility building study uh, for introducing this to the taxpayers of the city. Why, I mean, what is this?
Mr. Ma'am, if I could answer?
Yes, go right ahead.
Again, as we stated on um, Tuesday night, you know, having had a chance to walk um, Stuyvesant Avenue um, from Prospect um, down to Elmhurst, uh, based on the inquiries, based on complaints, uh, based on um, unsavory activity going on, uh, we felt though, that it was important that it rose to the occasion, um, that this area truly needed to be studied uh, for redevelopment purposes. Uh, when you have sixty-seven homes that quite frankly are blighted, um, at the end of the day, those residents who live on that area of Stuyvesant Avenue, um, quite frankly, I would think have an expectation that the city would wanna look at it, uh, rehabilitate those properties that we could rehabilitate, demolition those properties that in our need of demolition, um, that quite frankly uh, represent um, hazards.
That's not what I'm asking. We, we know that, you said that, you repeated that almost a thousand times, ad nauseam. But the fact of the matter is, you have no plan forward, you haven't established a funding source, you have, you have no plan to do any of that, what you just described. So, in my opinion, you're saying, all right, so this quick question, what time in twenty-twenty-two? It's twelve months in twenty-two, when is the study is gonna be un, un, commenced? And where is the funding source coming from? Period, that's my, that's what my question is.
Ma'am, it's anticipated, it's anticipated that we would look to commence this work uh, the first quarter of uh, FY or calendar year twenty-twenty-two. Um, and at a funding source.
I asked, who is gonna pay for this, Mr. Daniel?
Well, it, it probably, that's why I just say, funding source to be determined, um, it probably will come out of our department, um, A T D.
No, I've never seen, I, I mean, this is, I never seen any gov, any organization, government or otherwise, put up a proposal, a bit, a, 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 an ambitious, a very ambitious proposal. And gaslight pretty much, I mean, the city here. It's just.
Okay, so, so we had this discussion.
So I don't understand how this got on the docket, and how we as a government, the mayor, the, the council, even present this, what are we voting on, we're voting on nothing, absolutely nothing.
Ma'am, what we're simply asking for is permission to study, uh.
Well, all right, I, I'm done, this is just a grandstanding effort, and, and nothing's happening here. You have no money to even do a study. You don't have any money, you haven't identified the funding source. So how are you gonna propose a study? You know, we wanna study for a library, but we haven't put it up because we have, we don't have the money. We haven't, we, we haven't done, I mean, we haven't done the cost analysis. So, why was this even presented to the council? Why is it even on the docket?
Ma'am, because once, you know, we get approval from council uh, as we're looking forward to do, then we can better assess just how much the study will cost, and if needed, um, we can go out.
Now, that's.
Feasibility, an R E.
That's what feasibility study is, right? You're supposed to do that before you present it to the decision-making body.
So, so, right, so Councilwoman.
You don't present a project.
A point of order, Councilwoman Vaughn, do you wanna table this?
This is not my, this is not my resolution to table, this is the, this is his resolution. He's presenting us to, to the council. This is what you, the Council President, with all due respect, this is what you should be, be demanding. They can't present something of no substance to us. Wait, what are we approving? What are we voting on? I'm just asking, somebody, please educate me, what are we voting on here? We're just voting, voting on a concept, a concept? That's it?
No, no, ma'am, what, what we're voting, what, what I'm asking you to consider.
No, no, I'm done, we're voting on nothing, we haven't, we, we're not approving any funding here. We don't even, we don't even know how much the study's gonna cost, they have not done any, they haven't put any proposals for any consulting firms here, nothing, so what are we voting on?
Ma'am, that's all part, ma'am, that's all part before the.
We all know, every, there's many Stuyvesant avenues in this city, there's many Stuyvesant avenues that are blighted. So what is the difference? We know that, that, that we have to study the whole city. So we wanna know how much it's gonna, we need to take inventory, we, we need to come up with a, a, a viable plan of, of how we're gonna demo, I mean, that was part of the mayor's one thousand, one thousand houses in thousand days. Where's the plan to manage the blight? What's gonna replace Stuyvesant Avenue and east, and, and, uh, uh, Walnut Avenue? And Sanford Street and all the blighted areas throughout the city of Trenton?
All righty, so we, so we've already.
This is not substantive, and don't waste, I, 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 I just wanna say, stop wasting the council's time and the taxpayers' time with bogus proposals that are meaningless and have not done, and, and you haven't done your homework, you haven't done your research. We're all smarter than this, we're all smarter than this, and we deserve better.
I'm gonna move to, to, uh, to, 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 to table it.
I'm not voting on this, and I'm.
I have, ma'am, I have a resolution that cannot be interrupted, or a motion that cannot be interrupted, the motion to table must be heard without debate. Uh, motion to table twenty-one dash five eleven, ma'am, uh, Council President, what is the tabling mechanism? Uh, indefinitely?
Council, Council President?
Excuse me, sir, it is without debate, cannot interrupt, sir, at all.
To give the council the actual um, source of um, the um, the, um, the, the actual source of who's going to, um, how we're gonna pay for this, and the actual start and finish date, that would be the table mechanism. So, um, because if, if there, you wanna move out in the first of, uh, in the early part of twenty-twenty-two, then um, you should be able to give us by the end of December, the payment, uh, of, uh, the payment mechanism of which we're gonna pay, and then actually give us the time of how, where you're gonna start the actual process. So I'm asking that we table it until you can give us that, I think that's fair. Uh, okay, Mr. Conlon?
I have motion to table by Council President McBride until the actual source of funding is renewed, uh, is, is received as to how it's being paid for, and the start and finish dates of the project. Do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
I have a second by Miss Colwell Wilson. I will now call the roll, Mr. Blakely, for the table motion? Mr. Blakely is absent. Miss Colwell Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle, or, I'm sorry, Mr. Harrison?
No.
Mr. Michelle?
No.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Tabling, nothing, yes, yes, table it, nothing, nothing's substance.
Yes.
Resolution is tabled.
Uh, Mr., Mr. Colin, I'm just trying to figure out what is going on with Councilman Blakely. Um, during these meetings, he's in and out, um, he said he called in on the phone, but yet still he's not on the call. I'm, I'm trying to understand what is going on.
Ma'am, I referred him to IT a number of times, I don't have technical expertise. No other members seem to be getting disconnected on a regular basis, it's certainly not me. I don't believe it's IT, so um, I, I have no answer for you, ma'am, I really don't.
All righty, we may continue.
Yes, ma'am. Next, we have Resolution twenty-one dash five thirty-eight, I'm sorry, that's consent agenda. Uh, next we have Resolution twenty-one dash five forty-one. Buddy?
Wait a minute, so, wait a minute, wh, why not five twelve and five thirteen?
Because they're already, ma'am, they're still remaining in table, I put them on there just in case uh, there was a motion or anything, so, untable them, I didn't, yeah, based upon a memorandum.
Okay.
Yes, they're tabled, they're not going anywhere. Next we have Resolution twenty-one dash five forty-one, a resolution authorizing change order number five to the contract with Levy Construction Company, Inc., for bid twenty-twenty dash forty-nine, renovation of the Reading Senior Recreation Center, fifteen Ringgold, Ringgold Street, Trenton, New Jersey. Do I have a motion? A motion? Second call for a motion.
Mr. Conlon?
Yes, sir.
Are you, are you talking about twenty-one dash five forty-one?
Yes, sir.
The Reading Center?
Yes, sir.
Yes, so moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Harrison, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Michelle, I'll call the roll, Mr. Blakely? Mr. Blakely is absent, Miss Colwell Wilson?
Miss Colwell Wilson must be cut off.
Uh, she's here, she's meeting.
No vote.
Miss Colwell Wilson, there's no vote. Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
No.
Councilmember Vaughn?
No.
Council President McBride?
No.
Resolution fails. Uh, the count is three to two with one no vote and one absent. Next we have Resolution twenty-one. Twenty-one dash five forty-three. This is a resolution authorizing change order number one to the contract with the Inuzi Group LLC to conduct additional demolition of one hundred Hart Avenue. I have a motion.
I asked, Mr., wait a minute, I asked Mr. Daniel to bring me a plan for Hart Avenue. Did I even receive that either, Mr. Conlon?
Hello?
We're, hello? Council President? I asked the Economic Development Director and Housing Inspection, um, Director to throw us a plan of rendition of Hart Avenue. We're doing a lot of redevelopment over there, the city have invested a lot of money, so where is it?
So Mr. Douglas, or Mr. Daniels should have submitted a plan, he didn't, and right now this thing is up for a vote, and you can either motion to table it, or you will move.
But there should be a penalty, uh, with the Council President, when the council, how can I vote when I ask for more information?
Well, then you, well, then you need to, well, then you need to table it, because that's the only penalty.
Move, move, when, when a council member asks for more information, it's insufficient.
Then that, then that's why you, that's why you have the mechanism to table.
Council President, may I elaborate?
No, Mr. Daniels, if, the, the information was asked on Tuesday, and we don't have it by Thursday, and the only other mechanism to deal with the administration is to table it. And so, that's what she had, that, those are the mechanisms that is in front of us to work with. Mr., uh, so what do you wanna do, Councilwoman Vaughn?
I would move to table this.
All right, Mr. Conlon?
I have a motion by Ms. Vaughn to table, do I have a second of the motion to table?
I'm seconding it.
Okay, hold on, let me get to my notes. Okay, this is twenty-one dash five forty-three, motion by Ms. Vaughn. Second by Council President McBride.
And this, this is to be tabled until Mr. Daniels get over the plans of that area, which I believe the plan exists. If he could please just get it to us, so that we can move forward. Go right ahead, Mr. Conlon.
Yes, ma'am, for this area, call the roll, Mr. Blakely?
Yes, I'm really having a lot of technical difficulties for some reason, thank you.
Thank you, I, I needed to know that, Councilman Blakely, because I don't know what's going on with your line.
I literally have tried to log in, I've literally tried to, I don't know what's going on. I'll have a conversation with Joey uh, to figure out if there's something wrong with my uh, materials or my equipment, but this is really becoming uh, really annoying, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Councilman.
Miss Colwell Wilson?
No.
Okay, uh, somebody, I got, I got somebody's conversation back on, yeah, I gotta.
We have a lot of conversation, please mute yourselves. We have a lot of conversation, please mute yourselves.
Thank you. Mr. Harrison?
No.
Mr. Michelle?
No.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
Resolution carries by a vote of four to three. This is tabled until further notice, until the conditions are met. To my place. We're almost done. Next, we have Resolution 21-546. This is a resolution accepting a bid in awarding a contract to Foley Incorporated for natural gas engine maintenance contract services for a period of one year from date of award in an amount not to exceed $136,696 through bid 2021-59B. Do I have a motion? I have motion by Ms. Paula Wilson, do I have a second?
Second.
I have second by Mr. Harrison. I'm supposed to, I can call the roll.
Yes, please.
Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Ms. Paula Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
No.
Right.
Yes.
Resolution carries by a vote of six to one. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
No, no, go right ahead.
Okay, ma'am, that actually does it for the resolutions on the docket. Would you like me-
Wait a minute, excuse me, Council President? Where is the resolution that I had, that we vote on it, in my absence? Regarding the property, Waldosari?
It was, it was adjourned. You know, we did, that was the public hearing. It's not a resolution that was in ordinance, and that, that has been adjourned to a later date until such time as appraisals are received.
Okay, very well, very well, okay.
You're very welcome. Council President, would you like me to proceed?
Yes, please.
Yes, ma'am, first we have Ordinance 021-29. This is an introduction. Just for the record, even though the ordinance says two-thirds, it only requires simple majority for the introduction per Mr. Klose and Mr. Everett's emails earlier this afternoon. This is Order 021-29. Bond Ordinance, Subventing Bond Ordinance Number 10-34, finally adopted by the City Council of the City of Trenton, the County Immersive State of New Jersey on June 17, 2010, to amend Sections 3A and 4 therein.
Move to the vote.
Actually, hold on, I actually have a problem here that I just discovered. I'd like to consult with Mr. Klose just for two seconds, please.
Go right ahead.
Okay, I have to ask, Mr. Klose advised me to ask Mr. Johnson. Mr. Johnson, are you still on the call?
Yes.
Okay, so this bond ordinance actually is in Section 3A and 4 therein. Um, it was here, and I don't know the answer to this, I just have to check real quick. If there was an amendment on Section 4 in the 021-26, the prior amendment. So just give me one second to check, and then we could actually probably move past this. I just didn't see the Section 4 being amended. I just want to make sure there's no other sections amended in the prior bond ordinance. Just give me one second, just so we don't have a procedural issue going forward. Sorry about that, hold on one second. No, we're fine, it didn't touch any other section, okay? So it's fine, because we're actually amended, but we're amended to one section that was previously amended, okay? My apologies, this is the introduction of Vote 21-29, a bond ordinance, subventing bond ordinance number 10-34, finally adopted by the City Council of the City of Trenton, the County Immersive State of New Jersey on June 17, 2010, to amend Sections 3A and 4 therein. Do I have a motion to introduce?
So moved.
I have motion by Mr. Harrison, and a second by Ms. Paula Wilson. Council President, would you like me to call the roll?
Yes.
This is for introduction, Mr. Blakely.
Yes.
Ms. Paula Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
No.
Ms. Vaughn?
No.
Council President McBride?
No.
Order carries an introduction. The public hearing will be set for 10 days, just give me one second, folks. The hearing is for December 23, 2021. Council President, would you like me to proceed?
Yes, please.
Next, we have Ordinance 21-021-30, an ordinance vacating public rights of a public portion of Lombard Alley. Uh, hold on one second, let me bring it up for y'all. Do I have a motion?
Before we have a motion, Council President?
You have to have the motion-
I asked, I asked for information about this too, that I didn't get.
Do I have a second? I have a second, Mr. Harrison, Council President?
Yeah, Councilwoman Vaughn, do you have your notes out, Mr. Conlon?
Yeah, I'm looking.
Very quickly-
Yeah, she actually, she just asked for an explanation of what vacating the public right of way actually means.
Well, also, I asked Mr. Onatieri, who were we selling this to?
He's not selling it, he's giving it-
Not selling it, what were you giving it to? And it's not noted on the ordinance, and it should be. That we're giving it to, I believe, is the church, right?
Yeah, they mentioned that on Tuesday. I think they vacate it first, I don't know if this is a separate entity required, a separate vehicle required to actually give it away. So I think this is just to vacate the street, which is a common thing, actually reclaim land that's already been designated as an alleyway or a street. As far as the transfer, I don't have information on that. That would be Mr. Onatieri, who I don't believe is here tonight.
Okay, but it also could be the attorney, and this was for this, or Mr. Klose, right? So we're vacating-
Mrs. Samuels. Mrs. Samuels is representing tonight, Councilwoman Vaughn.
Mm-hmm. So, can we please have, uh, I would like the council attorney advice at this juncture. So, based on what the clerk had just shared, Mr. Klose, where should it be noted? Um, the, the, the transfer of this land, public property, to this entity, the church? Where should that be? Mm-hmm. Should it be in another resolution, or should it be in this ordinance? Because right now, the public has no idea who is receiving this gift. Which is their land, our land, right? So who is receiving the gift? Who is the administration, the mayoral administration, gifting this land to?
Madam President, my apologies, I had a little issue on muting myself. The, if you read the memo dated November 3, 2021, there is a memo attached to the, to the ordinance, and it says, "As per, per the Division of Traffic and Transportation, St. Mary's Church on Grand Street, Adelant Street recently became, came before the planning board for preliminary." So my, according to this memo, it is St. Mary's Church that is receiving this portion of land.
Okay, I think that should be in the ordinance. Right now, I appreciate the memo, but that should be in the ordinance.
Council President, this is Sally Daniels, I provide some-
There's some serious noise going on, Mr. Conlon.
I'm looking for it, ma'am, a lot of people in here. Somebody got it themselves.
Go right ahead, Mrs. Samuels.
Okay, thank you so very much, Council President. Councilwoman Vaughn, just to answer your question, the ordinance to vacate, to vacate the portion of the alley, that has to be separate, because in order to do a vacation of any property, it has to be done by ordinance. Now, to give the property to the church, that would have to be done in accordance with local land and buildings law, unless the property is within a redevelopment area. So, so that would have to be a separate action, and I'm not sure if the administration knows that. So in essence, if it's, if that, if that land, once it's vacated, is not within redevelopment area, then we would have to do that transfer by ordinance, and it would have to comply with the local land and buildings law, the actual transfer. And, and, but if it is within the redevelopment, redevelopment area, then we would do that by resolution. So that would be something that would have to come back before the body, you know? And that's just based on what I know about redevelopment and local land and buildings law. So I hope that answers your question.
Oh, yes, it does. And so, you, you said, you stated that you weren't aware whether the administration knew that, was aware of that process? Because I don't think anyone on this council was aware of it. So, you just shared it with us today. So having said that, so, Mr. Cruz, when are you gonna plan, based, when are you planning on reintroducing your intent, I mean, introducing your intent to give the land to the church?
Well, first, we have to go to the first reading, the second reading. Once the second one, it is adopted, then we can proceed with giving the land to the church. But as of this time, it would have, we'll have to wait. The clerk then have to advertise it, mayor have to sign, clerk have to advertise. Once it becomes legal, then we can proceed with the second portion.
Okay, very well, alright, I love, thank you.
Councilwoman, yes, Councilwoman Paula Wilson?
Yeah, and this, this is to Mr. Cruz. When the resolution comes before council, I would suggest that there'd be a price attached to that piece of land. Because I know when the New Jersey Realtors Association needed an easement, and they needed that alleyway, we had to negotiate a price that we're gonna give them that, that easement and that alleyway for, for their, to have access to the parking lot. And they wanted to give it away for a dollar, and this was during a previous administration. And, and I was very kind enough to say, if you want something for a dollar, go to a dollar store. So I think you need to look at the value of that small piece of land and have the church pay for it. Thank you.
Mr. Cruz, I concur with the vice chair, based on the fact that these are nonprofit organizations. They do not contribute anything to our tax base. And to, to have them here occupying space, and they're not paying any taxes, and then you turn around and you increase their property that is not gonna be on the tax roll, it makes no sense to me. Every Sunday, those parishioners come in there, they pass a plate. And that plate accumulates, but they're here, they're not paying any taxes, and then you, on top of that, you want to give them land. I just don't think it's fair to the taxpayers in the city to just give the property away that belongs to the residents that are actually paying taxes to give something to a nonprofit that does not pay. And we don't even see any services that they render to the city. That's my comment. You can move forward, Mr. Conlon, Mr. Conlon.
Madam President, if I may, make the last statement.
No, you may not. Mr. Conlon, you may move forward.
Ms. Paula Wilson, I don't know if you want to-
She had already, she had already spoken.
Just wanted to make sure.
I'll take it down.
I have an introduction by Mr. Blakely, a second by Mr. Harrison. I'll now call the roll, Mr. Blakely.
Yes.
Ms. Paula Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Council President McBride?
No.
Introduction carries by a vote of six to one. Public hearing will be set, this requires 10 days because of vacation of a public alley. Let me just make sure I count. It's Tuesday, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, 10. Public hearing will be December 23, 2021. Finally, on the docket, we have, uh, Order 21-31, which actually is pulled. So that is, uh, Ms. Paula Wilson, you wanted that pulled just for the updates, right? As it has not been introduced in any way, shape, or form, we can just take it off. Council President, that does that for the, for tonight.
So we want to move to public comment, please?
Yes, ma'am, Council President, I'm also at the top of the meeting. I'm going to ask to be allowed to make public comment during the meeting.
Pardon me?
I'm going to be asking for my personal ability to make a public comment during this meeting.
No, I, I, no.
I'm going to have to insist, ma'am, as my First Amendment rights. I've already discussed this with Mr. Klose, and at this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Klose-
Mr. Klose? For the public comment, can we please start the public comment?
Yes, ma'am, we'll start public comment, Mr. Klose will get back to us.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm here.
Do you want to get a first, ma'am, or do you want to get a public comment? Council President?
Please, a public comment?
Well, and I am gonna ask again at the end of the, after everybody goes.
Okay, I got you loud and clear, but I said I needed the public comment to start.
Yes, ma'am.
You're here functioning as a clerk, and so, I don't, I would have to get a clear understanding from Mr. Klose before, because you had the opportunity on Tuesday to make a statement, you didn't, and so-
I did not have the opportunity on Tuesday to make a statement, ma'am, that I was told specifically by legislative council, I would not be allowed to make a statement.
Alrighty, okay. Mr. Klose, I mean, Mr. Conlon, could we continue with the public comment?
Yes, ma'am, first we have Ms. Zoe Leach, or Mr. Zoe Leach, I'm sorry, I don't know whether it's male or female. Could you please state your name for the record and address?
Ms. Zoe Leach, 810 Lawrence Mall Road.
Thank you, ma'am. Council President?
Go right ahead, Ms.
Hi, Council, oh, thank you, thank you, and forgive me for asking, I just couldn't hear clearly. To pass Resolution 21-530?
About the transportation of the gas, it passed.
Okay, sorry, I apologize, that's all.
Council President, next we have Noah G.
I was gonna ask the same thing, so you can take me out of the queue.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Council President, next we have Mary Horn.
Go right ahead, Ms. Horn.
Yes, I'd just like to say, and thank you very much, due to the public interest, anytime there are tax-based properties that need to have taxes paid on in the interest of the fact that people have lost their properties due to taxes. If there is a plan, or if there, if we cannot continue to give away our properties for free when people have lost their homes because they couldn't pay their taxes. Now, I think it would be well in the public interest that we do get the information that we need, so we- so we can understand what's going on here, and I haven't heard that tonight. So, and I was on the other night where we were asked for information. I haven't heard that tonight. So, and just to say that, the Law Department represents the taxpayers also, not just the city. So, so, so we need some information, and we need to know how things are going forth. And we're, we're not hearing that, and we're not hearing it a lot. So, in the interest of the taxpayers and, and the public interest, I think we need to hear that. And when we are all talking about, uh, properties and we don't have a plan for it, we need to hear that. And I can't see how a person can vote on something and, and not know all the information on that. So, that's all I have to say tonight, and thank you very much.
Ladies and gentlemen, does anybody else wish to be heard for the public portion of the Trenton City Council meeting? Council President, Ms. Sherri Garrett.
Yes, go right ahead, Ms. Garrett. Ms. Garrett?
Sorry about that. Thank you, Council President McBride and the body, the council body. Um, I just don't want to elaborate, would like to elaborate on the, um, forensic report. Um, I, I, it is needed for us to complete, uh, the forensic report, but I'm just not sure how, um, $250,000. I think we started the forensic report a year ago, and we paid him $250,000. So, we're paying him $250,000 from this point on, and he said he, I think, there's like 20, 25% of that hasn't been, um, spent yet, has been drawn down yet. So, the question is, um, you know, you hired this firm. Um, I would think this firm has done forensic, forensic audit before, because I kept hearing, um, the gentleman, um, make, you know, state that, um, he didn't, he didn't, wasn't aware of the volume. I mean, you, I, I'm sure when you spoke with him and you did the, um, you did the, um, the initial, um, investigation, um, to determine to what, uh, how many, how far you would go back, or how, how many years that you were, he would be covering. Uh, and, and, and an entity that old, I'm, I'm sure he should have realized that it was volume. So, I, I kinda get, a, a flag goes up on me when people start explaining, you know, when they get into something, especially if that's your expertise and you got the skill, skill to do it. But he did give us relevant information, um, a lot of information that he did share far as, um, you know, the payments, um, not being able to match the payments with the money going out, the expenses that, that were paid out or money moving out of the, um, authority. That has to be reconciled or determined what happened to that money. So, my concern, um, is that, you know, that's what he's asking, $250,000. The question is, give us another number. And he's gotta be able, I'm not sure if he's actually the one who was doing the work, because I'm assuming based on his, 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 um, presentation, uh, it was more surface, but he did finally give us some little details, and he ran through that stuff kind of quickly. So, I'm assuming he's just the person who's responding, but he's not actually doing the work. So, I think there's gotta be more detail to what we're paying for if to continue, but it has to be completed. And I also think that there needs to be a forensic audit of the city as well, because I think the same issue, um, is just like, is what's happening at the, um, uh, the Water, uh, uh, is actually happening with the administration. Um, thank you very much. Um, a few things, uh, I want to say about the agenda, uh, especially, uh, the last one that was, uh, an issue on Tuesday, the 21-31, in regards to the, uh, Fire Director and the Deputy Fire Director, you know, that needs to be actually, like, tossed, because it just sounds like there was conversation, um, information was pulled to put, to justify this, but there really wasn't meetings of the mind. You know, um, you put something together, and then you made it seem like you had, everyone was on board who you discussed this with, even the unions, and that wasn't the case. So, that, that really bothers me. Um, in regards to property, as Ms. Horn was just saying, I don't know why I'm hearing an echo, but that's just... As Ms. Horn was stating, you know, she's absolutely right. Uh, this war is absolutely right. You know, people are losing their homes, barely can pay their, uh, you know, they're, they're managing paying their, their taxes. As I stated before, there was a few, um, property owners who I was speaking and passing, who said, yeah, their property taxes did go up for 2021. One of them told me specifically it was $700. Well, I don't know how there was a flat tax, like, I, I'm not sure if a certain parts of town, the taxes didn't go up. I'm not sure what it is, but we're hearing one thing, and other stuff is going on behind the scenes that are not, you know, validating what we're hearing at council and what's being presented at council. So, that, that's a, that's a real issue. Um, as well, uh, as well as, um, that to, uh, oh, yes. Uh, I wanted to say something else in regards to, like, the issue, the matter that is happening in the clerk's office. I also wanted to make note, and I meant to say that on Tuesday. Not only is there an issue in the, the, as we're, as what, what brought about that, uh, uh, you know, this whole scenario with, uh, uh, Mr. Conlon, but there's issues in all the departments in the city of Trenton. There's infighting issues with the directors, with, uh, city employees, city employees with, you know, it's a lot of that's going on. And it's not that somebody's running, it's, it's interesting, it's just this stuff is falling into my lap. You know, I'm out of function, or I'm out of, uh, somewhere, and people are talking about it, trying to get answers about how to deal with whatever the issue is there at, at City Hall. It's a, it's a lot of infighting going on in City Hall. And, um, a, a, another thing, you got people who are working there, you know, you've been working there for years, and you're not being, you're not improving on the skills. Matter of fact, when I even heard that there's a program for security, cybersecurity, to keep people from breaking into our, our, our server or through, through wifi, attacking our files, investing our files, and the city employees are not even utilizing, going through the training. So, you know, something's gotta change here. I, I, you know, this Mayor Guciara, you always in the paper, and you're making comments, and you, you, you dragged everybody in City Council through the paper. You dragged, uh, the clerk through the, uh, through the paper, and you're, nothing is running right at the city, at, in the city, at the City Hall. It's a big problem. And if it wasn't for, um, uh, Mr. Ben Delisle, you know, coming out and, and speaking outwardly, other people who have left haven't even spoke out outwardly about what's going on in City Hall. But we already know, you don't have to be a fly on the wall to figure out this, there's a lot of division in the city, in, in the city government, city, um, city Trenton government. So, we need to clean our act up, as I said before, with the, uh, Trenton Police Department. Something's gotta give, because if they don't get their act together, and this whole thing with, uh, Councilman Michelle, you riding, we're gonna have to do what Camden did, because we're paying out a lot of money for them to keep crime going on in the city so they can say they got a job. Enough is enough. Um, I think that's about it, if I covered, but some of this stuff in, uh, on this here that you pulled, you tabled, yes, you're right. And, um, thank you, Council, um, uh, body council, some of you who understands that why are we voting on stuff, or you approving stuff that's not gonna happen, uh, uh, come to fruition? Uh, there's got to be some changes. Um, Trenton is, is, I'm telling you, we, it's, it's bleeding here, and we need better leadership, especially if, if from that mayor's office, because, uh, it, the, it, your stuff is stinking. You may not be sending that stuff to the paper, uh, Mr. Guciara, but we're hearing it through the streets. Just giving you a heads up on that. Thank you.
Any other members of the public wish to be heard? Council President, I'd like, I'd like to raise the request again for me to be allowed to participate in public portion under my First Amendment, United States constitutional rights and the rights that are afforded me under the Constitution of the State of New Jersey and under the Open Public Meetings Act.
Alrighty, go right ahead.
Thank you, ma'am.
President McBride, President McBride, before that happens, I have a question I'd like to make. This is, this is, this is Councilman Blakely, and, and I'd like to ask the question before that happens to the, uh, the, uh, our legal counsel as well as the city's legal counsel to ensure that this is proper, this seems, uh, you know, he's not, uh, just a citizen. He is an employee, he's an, he's an employee, and he has certain restrictions based on his status as an employee. He is not operating as...
Mr. Conlon.
I'm asking a question. I'm asking a question. I would just like to know.
Sir.
Uh, President, you're, you're interrupting me. You are, this is, you are, you're interrupting council meeting. I would like to ask legal counsel, both Mr. Colosi, as well as, um, the, uh, 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 the city's legal director for an opinion on, uh, the, 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 the properness uh, of Mr. Colosi speaking regarding his, uh, capacity, his employment, uh, you know, as an employment. He's talking about matters of his employment, and I just wanted to ask, I'm not making a judgment myself. I would like to know, I'm not making it, uh, 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 making a statement for myself. As I mentioned, I am asking for legal, because we just want to make sure that...
Okay, um, Mr. Colosi.
Yes, uh, Mr. Conlon indicated to me earlier, um, that he was going to seek to speak at the public portion. I did some research between the Open Public Meetings Act. The salutary purpose is to allow the public to speak on matters they believe are of concern, uh, NJSA 10 colon 4 dash 12. In this context, he would be a member of the public. I understand he's an employee, and there's case law that basically says an employee doesn't give up all his rights, you know, to First Amendment communication as an employee. However, when he gets up and he does speak, he somewhat does it at his own peril, because if he says something that's, you know, inappropriate or along those lines, it could have ramifications, and I'm sure, you know, Mr. Conlon, uh, would, would clearly understand that. As to minutes, uh, while Mr. Conlon won't actually be taking minutes, which are in effect notes and summaries, uh, the actual recorded trans, the actual recorded version of his comments will be transcribed word for word. So, we will actually have a record of his comments that is better than, uh, notes or minutes taken by someone, because we're gonna actually have a word-for-word transcript prepared. So, based upon the totality of what we've, uh, you know, uh, just bantered back and forth, coupled with the fact that the other night, on Tuesday, Mr. Conlon and his attorney was specifically prohibited from addressing anything because it was council's discussion. But this is the public portion of a council meeting, and I, you know, think it's reasonably clear that he would have the right to get up and speak. But again, the content of what he says, if there are ramifications down the road, that's, that's something else. So, I would say allow him to speak.
Thank you.
Would you like me to respond on behalf of the city's law department?
Yes, you can.
Thank you so very much. Councilman Blakely, uh, I spoke with the Director Bridges, and, uh, the law department or the city's law department concurs with Mr. Colosi's, um, opinion, uh, that, uh, employees pursuant to NJSA 10 colon 4 dash 12 do not give up all their rights and that they are permitted to speak during the public portion of a council meeting. Um, again, uh, we re, we reiterate that if, uh, depending on what Mr. Conlon says, that it may be, again, at his own peril, um, considering, uh, the allegations, but he is permitted or, or he can, uh, speak during the public portion. Thank you.
Just wanted to be sure, just put it on the record. Thank you.
Alrighty, so it's now, um, recorded into the record, and Mr. Conlon, you have the floor.
Thank you, ma'am. This is my opinion as Matthew Conlon, personal citizen, not a sitting city clerk. This does not reflect the opinions of the city, its elected officials or its employees. I wanted to take this time to refute the charges against me as reported in the Trentonian by Mr. Isaac Avellcia and reiterated by this council on Tuesday, November 30th. I filed suit against Mr. Avellcia and his publication, as well as the city of Trenton. Mr. Avellcia and his numerous articles are, in my opinion, in his own self-interest. The city, I believe, has reached its decision on Tuesday in retaliation for my filing of a lawsuit as brought up by two council members during their public comments of the rights notice. There is an unholy relationship between this publication, the Trentonian, and the city of Trenton, as numerous documents from citizens and cities' personnel files have been freely given and published in the Trentonian. In addition, on September 30th, September 3rd, 2020, Mr. Avellcia recorded and published a tape of a Trenton City Council executive session. That incident was reported to the FBI, after which Mr. Avellcia sent me a concerning email indicating that he was allowed to record any phone call to which he was made a part of, given access to the executive session by someone else. I disagree that this includes access to the confidential attorney-client privileged information of the Trenton City Council, and I accordingly reported that offense to law enforcement. Also, on September 3rd, 2020, as was reported in an attorney ethics complaint, which is public record by me against John Morelli, it was determined that Mayor Reed Gociora was specifically pointed out by former Deputy Mayor Yoshi Manali as providing information to Mr. Manali from the September 3rd, 2020 council executive session. Mayor Gociora had no right to view or disseminate information from that executive session, was not a part of that meeting, and if the written statements by Mr. Yoshi Manali are true that he was receiving confidential information of the city council executive session, then Mayor Gociora must immediately resign. This council has extensive investigative powers, and I urge you to assist them to investigate this, receive testimony, investigate the consistent and concerning release of personnel information to newspapers to target employees. These are paramount ethical violations and are, and are in line with the same behavior that has forced and compelled presidents of the United States to have to resign. Likewise, the parties involved herein must resign to preserve the peace and dignity of the people of the city of Trenton. I have reported this and other numerous events to various local and state and federal entities. What will become of those events is in their hands. Since I first reported this event, I have been the subject of numerous concerning, misleading, and pointedly self, very self-interested newspaper articles by Mr. Isaac Avellcia. What is even more concerning is that Mr. Avellcia continues to contact me under the guise of being a reporter, even though I filed suit against him for his quote-unquote "reporting." Mr. Avellcia, if he has any semblance of personal ethics, should withdraw and stop acting in further self-interest, stop harassing me for filing a lawsuit against him and reporting what I believe to be criminal behavior. And it is, and I am advising him now that going forward, he should contact only my attorney, as he is a party opponent in a lawsuit. His behavior continues to be shocking and concerning. What is even more shocking is that recent events in the newspaper were relayed to me by Mr. Avellcia in a voicemail on November 23rd, 2021, hours before they actually occurred. Mr. Avell, Avellcia relayed events to me in a voicemail at 10:18 a.m., published an article at 11:13 a.m., and the events that he stated in the article didn't occur until after 12 p.m. Mr. Avellcia has incredible clairvoyance. I deny sexually harassing any employee. Myself, my family, my friends, and my significant other have been attacked openly by the city and the publication. My recently deceased brother was contacted by lawyers, hired by this city to see if he would give any dirt on his brother, as they put it. Recently, I was accosted and publicly humiliated by another special counsel for the city of Trenton. That special counsel is a firm which did a prior investigation report on me and never even interviewed me and refused to interview me in the presence of my attorney. I will continue to protect this council despite the accusations, statements, and actions of a number of its members, but I will not turn a blind eye to resolutions which even in their own council, which are own... Legal council states are not qualified for emergency consideration. I cannot turn a blind eye to contracts presented which are far in excess of the authorizing resolutions approved by this council. I cannot turn a blind eye to the fact that this council was compelled and requested on repeated occasions to surrender its powers to other parties, and in one case, on the advice of a former city attorney, did so with regard to UEZ loan approval for $600,000 of UEZ money went out the door of this city without appropriate city council approval. This is just a few of the items and anomalies of this administration that I have reviewed with state investigators, and it has this knowledge of my cooperation with those investigators that has led to this retaliatory, deeply disturbing continuation of the targeting of personal acts against me via a call for a hearing on charges brought against me now. I have not seen the charges yet to date. I have not officially been notified by the Personnel Department of any complaints or charges against them. I categorically, again, deny sexually harassing any employee of the city of Trenton ever, and those charges and the mention of the same are repugnant to myself, my family, my friends, and all who know me. friends, and all who know me. In relation to a number of other charges, I am the only city clerk to have requested Spanish translation of all of our frontline documents for the benefit of Spanish-speaking communities. I personally worked to stop targeting of Latinos in Atlantic County, New Jersey during the foreclosure crisis, worked with the FBI and several state bar associations to break up targeted fraud schemes, and saved the homes of hundreds of Latino people...
Someone needs to mute themselves.
And saved the homes of hundreds of Latino people in New Jersey as a nonprofit program director working in coordination with the New Jersey Housing and Mortgage Finance Agency. Recently, statements and references have been made that allude to some perception of discrimination against Spanish-speaking people. I absolutely and categorically deny this as well. My reputation in New Jersey, my actions in this office, and my past significant charitable and work deeds supporting the Latino community in New Jersey are well documented and speak for themselves. Please take these false allegations somewhere with credible evidence, which I have and these parties do not. The city paid lawyers in December twenty twenty ascertain a way to send me to prison or get me indicted. I have seen the legal bill. It was provided to me despite my protest that I should not be provided bills of firms or others which have been hired to politically target me. Mr. Edward Florio, special counsel attorney for the mayor and numerous others, including other lawyers hired by the city of Trenton, pulled documents from an agency in Virginia which required my authorization and release. They indicated that they had the authorization and release, and they did not. Moreover, on November second, twenty twenty, Isaac Avellcia wrote an article in which he indicated that he attempted to pull the same information from that Virginia agency but could not because he did not have my birth date, which was then provided by an elected official of the city of Trenton. That was printed directly in the Trentonian, and that elected official was identified. It wasn't just lawyers hired by the city, it was numerous lawyers, a reporter, and an elected official, all who indicated they had assigned authorization and release, could not obtain my information without my birth date, and then were provided that birth date by an elected official of this city. These lawyers should be banned from doing business with the city, and the elected official who provided that information and pulled that information without my permission should immediately resign. I will have further statements in the forthcoming meetings with other indications of why I'm being specifically targeted. My story has not yet been told, and I assure you that I have each piece of evidence to prove my version of events. It is in my training. I did, in fact, pass the bar, though I do not have an active law license. I did, in fact, go to law school. Last since Tuesday, I have received a number of calls and a few emails from residents and employees in the city of Trenton expressing their deep support for me. I am deeply appreciative of this, and I will never forget the love that you have shared with me, and once again, I am very deeply appreciative. I will be issuing further statements in the coming meetings under my First Amendment Constitutional Rights prior to the hearing that is upcoming. Thank you again, Matthew Conlin. Thank you, Council President, I appreciate it.
Thank you. And, um, the public comment has already been shared, um, with the public, and, um, now we'll move to the, um...
Council President, we do have a member, Evangeline Ugore.
The public comment has been closed.
Actually, it was not formally closed. There was no motion to close it, and Ms. Ugore did raise her hand.
May I speak?
Council President, do you hear Ms. Ugore? Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, uh, Council President McBride, and thank you, the body of council there. Unfortunately, some days I'm unable to get in as early as I need to or want to. Uh, I missed the opportunity to speak last Tuesday, and today, outside of what the city clerk has just, um, put into record, I had said previously that this administration came in, in a blaze of glory, costing the city money. It did its best to pit the legislative body against each other and just basically created a hostile, nonproductive environment of, of, uh, politics of vendetta amongst the legislative, uh, um, representatives of the, of the respective wards and at, and at large. I maintain that this same administration, by the time it leaves, is going to leave us in worse, um, uh, debt in terms of monies that it has cost us. I haven't, I wasn't born or raised here, but I raised myself up in this city that I call home away from home by myself as a teenager. This is the absolute worst I have heard of any administration for the city of Trenton. This mayor has been campaigning for reelection surreptitiously ever since the start of his tenure, illegally and wantonly so. No wonder he's unable to, uh, uh, call to, uh, 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 caution or reprimand those under him, whether it be the, his, members of his cabinet or the, the authorities that he oversees. How can a fox guard a chicken coop? As my other co-Trenton, uh, citizens and residents said before, we are all aware of what's going on in the city hall, in the city of Trenton, and why Trenton is the butt of the joke of our neighbors in, in, in this county and, and beyond this county line. As I said before, um, whatever problems there are regarding this particular city clerk, it's not isolated to him. There's been a, 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 a very, very glaring revolving door under this administration right from day one, and so the problem is not the employees, it's the administration, period. Administration one oh one, like I said before. It is really unconscionable what's going on, but like I said, I'm on my knees praying, just like many others are praying. My, my co-resident, uh, 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 I think, uh, uh, Ms. Garret did say, everybody knows what's going on, and I'm not the only one praying, and every drop of blood, money, all sweat and tears that are being taken out of this city illicitly and illegally with all these corrupt resolutions, all this quip pro quoing, all this insider trading in this year's stock exchange that is the city of Trenton is going to come to a head soon. And I want to add at this juncture, Trenton is not alone and isolated in, in, in enabling what's going on. There are what you call oversight entities at the county and state levels, and therefore all of them are complacent and complicit in total. I'm talking beyond that level. And so the question is, who is, who is going to guard the, 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 the chicken coop when we're surrounded by nothing but a bunch of foxes? That is the common denominator that appears in everything, forensic audits or not. It doesn't take a rocket scientist to know what's going on, and it is really sad, but like I said, the Pandora's boxes, it's not a matter of whether they will open, it's a question of when, how. Okay? And people need to be brought to, um, uh, 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 how do I say, that people need to be reprimanded in every which way there is to be reprimanded under the law, and Trenton needs to, uh, be redeemed from this shameful and continuing past. Thank you very mu- much, and that's all I have to say.
And may I speak?
Your name, the Director, ma'am?
Uh, yes, it's Faith Ann Pearson.
Yes, ma'am. Council President, Faith Ann Pearson.
Yes, go right ahead.
Uh, two things. Number one, I want to commend Mr. Conlin for standing up for his rights. Second is the ordinance of twenty-one dash thirty-one. The emphasis of a deputy chief, is that supposed to be directly under the director? Because the actual chiefs of each of the fire sections ha, would be, the deputy chief would be under them. I'm thinking that maybe you should change the deputy chief to deputy director. It might make things a little bit easier and more understandable with the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, does anyone else wish to be heard for the public portion of Trenton City Council meeting?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am, your name?
Valerie McCray Jones.
Council President, Valerie McCray Jones.
Go right ahead, Ms. Jones.
Yes, I am appalled that councils spend more time on debating whether they're going to give land away. Here we are on Dyson Avenue worrying about where we're going to live, which homes are going to be torn down. Now, this resolution has been sitting on change for three meetings. During the first meeting, it was agreed upon that the wording of the resolution will be changed. Here we are, three meetings later, and nothing has been changed. The residents of Dyson Avenue, especially the homeowners, need to know what's going on, what the plans are, and we would appreciate knowing more. There's no, uh, community involvement, no one is telling us what's going on. This is ridiculous. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Con, Mr. Conlin?
Yes, ma'am. Does anybody else wish to be heard for public portion?
I approve the closed public comment.
I have motioned for Mr. Blakely to close public comment, too. Have a second.
So moved.
Have a second by Council President McBride, all in favor.
I'll, um, ask a couple of questions to the administration. I tried to get this information offline, but, uh, as one of our resident eloquently stated, the administration is in chaos. There's nobody working at City Hall, not in the mayor's office, and none of their, none of the directors. Many of the directors are not even qualified to even do jobs that they have done, um, placing. You see no, no real meaningful or impactful efforts being put forth by any of them. In other communities, uh, I live in other communities before returning to Trenton, and directors are appointed by the mayor. They have statutory duties, statutory duties. They have done none of the directors. I think the only director that the community, that the community even know, knows is Wally Anatari because his public works department is out there in the streets every day. The other director, nobody knows him. They do no community outreach whatsoever. They don't hold community meetings, nothing. They come to council unprepared and unwilling to even engage the, um, the elected officials that the city of Trenton has put, um, in place to move forward the work of the city. You ask them to report. Every council member up here has asked for reports, information. We ask, uh, uh, citizens, contact us with their requests and services that they need. The administration, because they don't like certain council members, they don't support certain council members. Knowing perfectly well, those council members are, are presenting projects and requests on behalf of the citizens. Citizens, I mean, I have emails, I have text messages, folks have, citizens call City Hall, citizens go to City Hall, and all they get is resistance, same old, same old. So I concur totally with everybody who has spoken here tonight, and I am supportive of all the residents and taxpayers who have had challenges dealing with this, the mayor and, and persons of this administration. So you can't come in here and give the city away, uh, hoping that in doing so, you get reelected. You can't do that, and that's what's being done here. You want to give a city away to nonprofit organizations? You want to give it away to, um, local, uh, churches and, you know, to get, you know, certain, uh, populations of people so you can get reelected? Well, if you really understood Trentonians in the history of this city, you would know that that is, that, that's, that's a failed strategy, failing strategy. So I just want to say, um, I will continue to work and to continue to try to get answers and reports and data that will result in some type of benefit to our city. So in that vein, we have an animal shelter. I've been getting, uh, it, uh, I've been sent, I've sent numerous emails to the administration about the qualification of, of the individuals who are working over at the animal shelter. Are they properly licensed by the state? Have they met, have they continued to meet the requirement of the state of their continual education requirement? Also, the organization that we engaged and contracted with the services, are, is that organization properly credentialed to, to provide animal services at the level that's required by, by the state? That's all I ask. The administration refuses to give us that information?
What's wrong?
So, 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 I want to know. So Mr. M, so Dr. Lopez, are you on the line? Dr. Lopez, are you on the line?
I'm here.
Okay, so you've, you've gotten my email. So can you please tell me what is the status of the employees at the animal shelter?
Well, the email, you're seeing that, I believe.
Wait, man, just, Jose Munoz is the manager over there. Is he properly licensed and he has completed all his continual education?
Yes, he has a certification, yes, he's licensed, and they do have to have additional training to meet, and their certification.
So that...
Councilwoman Vaughn, in the email, your attorney advised, um, I believe, Adam Cruz, the BA, as well as Wes Bridges, to follow up and provide those credentials. So, um, Mr. Bridges isn't on the line, so I'm just going to hold out because I'm adhering to the email that was sent, based on your attorney.
What, no, he's been requesting on my behalf the same thing. It, it isn't...
I know, he went through the law department.
This is public information, but you're the director. You have statutory duty.
And I am following them, ma'am.
So, 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 so you don't need to wait. When, when, when a, when a city council member asks you for something, Dr. Lopez, we gave you advice and consent.
Oh, I know what you gave me, Scott.
So, so, so you cannot come here and say, oh, I didn't give you the, you, you should, you don't need the law director, anybody, to give you permission to give that information.
You will get the information by email as it was sent to me, Councilwoman Vaughn.
Okay, very well. But, but you, you just stated something that's totally incorrect. You have statutory duty. So when I ask you, or any director...
Respectfully ask me, Councilwoman Vaughn, respectfully, respectfully ask me, Councilwoman Vaughn. The word is respect. The word is respect. The word is respect.
Well, you are over three weeks late with your information, so you have respectfully, uh, uh, you have not respectfully performed, uh, performed your duty. So get that information to the entire, to the clerk so he can disseminate it to the council, okay? Of all the employees over at the animal, animal shelter, which ones are out, what, what courses are outstanding?
I got the email, I will respond to it.
Okay, very well. Thank you very much. And also, uh, you're, and, and, and confirm that the nonprofit organization, Animal Rocks, also is properly credentialed or not. They don't have to be, but certainly you, w, we would like them to be, of course, but I want to know that you vetted that organization. That, i, i, if you agree with, I mean, are we in agreement as to what you are to produce?
I read your email, and I will respond to it accordingly. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, the, the, the next, um, question I have is to, to, this is administrative, very quickly. Is Adam Cruz on the line?
Madam President, I am on if you would like for me to respond to Councilwoman Vaughn when the time comes.
Okay. This is my, this is my civic comment, so you don't have to ask, uh, Council President to respond to my civic comments, okay? So, uh...
I actually, I actually need to address the chair, not you.
No, 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 Mr. Cruz.
That, that, that is protocol, Council.
Okay, so, 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 okay, Mr. Cruz. All right. So, Mr. Cruz, what is the status of the investigations over at the New Jersey, um, uh, state of investigations for the three, uh, subpoenas that was delivered to this city? What is the status of the investigation?
Uh, that is a conversation you need to have with the law department. I'm not, I don't handle legal matters.
Okay, so, so, so now, you are, you are, this is administrator, so, okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna, uh, keep, so that's your, uh, response on the record. As I stated, this is the, these are the people we have, the mayor has appointed cabinet to run this city. No transparency whatsoever. The public is on the line, they want... As I stated, this is the, these are the people we have, the mayor has appointed cabinet to run this city. No transparency whatsoever. The public is on the line. They want to know what the status of the investigation, and all Mr. Cruz can do is show his animosity to account the one. So, um, so, uh, Mr. Cruz, hazard pay. My concern is, I need you to send me, which I sent the request to the mayor as required by law. Hazard pay. Ha- what percentage of non-residents received a check out of the care, added, out of the, um, the ARPA funds? What percentage of non, of non-residents, work for, non-resident employees receive funding from the ARPA funds?
I will ask the mayor to forward me the email. I'll look into it, and, uh, if necessary, will provide you an answer.
Okay. You, no, you received the email, Mr. Cruz. It was forwarded-
Okay. I'll look into it.
I asked, I asked the administration that the ARPA funds, uh, out of the ARPA funds, we paid eight million dollars out to, uh, employees of the city for hazard pay. But a large percentage of those employees were not eligible to receive that money based on the guidance from the U.S. Treasury because they're not residents of this city. So that money was taken out of the city that was earmarked for Trentonians, were earmarked for the City of Trenton, for the people who live in this city who are disproportionately impacted by the pandemic, which COVID-19. But yet, the mayor, regusior, decided to give a large percentage of that money to non-residents who are ineligible, living, living municipalities that did not receive the ARPA funds because their municipality and where they live was not disproportionately impacted by COVID. That money will never come back into the city and have the impact that was intended by the ARPA funds. And I want to know how much money that is, because that would translate into the, the impact that we will never see off. So, Mr. Cruz, you get me that information, and you get the council that information, because that money needs to be clawed back, and that money should have never left our borders and given to people who are ineligible. That money is for Trentonians, and the mayor continues to disperse that money against the guidance of the United States Treasury. That money was earmarked for Trenton. So, um, the other thing that I wanted to discuss, uh, is, uh, actually, I'm going to defer discussing the ordinance, um, regarding the duties of the fire director. I will defer until, uh, the attorneys can continue making the changes. So, um, and that, and that's all I have, Council President. Thank you.
Hi. Madam, Madam President, I would like to follow up with a statement that the statement made by the Councilwoman is incorrect. The, uh, American Rescue Plan Act does not, uh, discriminate against individuals that are not residents of a municipality. It is open to, uh, to people that provide services for the municipality regardless of their residential status.
Okay. Send, send me that, send, share that, uh, provision.
But you have it. You, you say you, you say you had it.
You to say that for the provision. I, I don't believe you're correct. I did not say I have, I don't, I don't know any of the provision in the regulation that says that, Mr. Cruz. Okay, so send that provision.
I, 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 I will send it, yes.
You will not, because it doesn't exist.
Thank you, Councilwoman Vaughn. Um, Councilman Rodriguez?
Uh, I'm not promised.
All righty. Thank you. Councilman, are you okay? Um, Councilman, uh, Mewshaw?
Uh, no comment.
Councilman Harrison?
Um, my comments are, first, um, I would like to thank, uh, Bishop Bonaparte and his church, uh, New Hope Church of God. Um, on Thanksgiving, they gave out over, uh, seven hundred, uh, turkey dinners all around the city. Um, I also would like to thank, uh, all the hard work, Latino merchants for getting gloves and hats for kids and adults. Um, the, I am Trenton, the other day, uh, Taste of Trenton, Bernie McMullin, all the hard work he's doing, um, in the city of Trenton. But then today, I'd just like to thank people for all the, the work that they're doing to get things done in the city. So I appreciate everybody's help. Thank you so much, but thank you truly from the bottom of my heart, Ms. Bishop Bonaparte, because you do so much for this great city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilwoman Caldwell-Wolson.
Yes, I just want to thank everybody for participating in the meeting tonight, and I want to, um, let everybody know that the Mill Hill, uh, community has their annual house tour, um, Saturday. Um, due to the COVID and restrictions, people are not coming into the homes, but we have residents that have decorated the outside of their homes, will have their curtains opened. You can look in the window and see their decorations in the, um, in their, their front rooms. Um, so we would appreciate your support. Everything, all the money that we make from that, it's twenty dollars, I believe, um, goes towards the upkeep of the community. So we will welcome you at Saturday from twelve to five. Thank you.
And, uh, Ca- and Councilman Blakely?
Councilman Blakely is here. I have no comment. Enjoy your day, everyone, and, uh, I look forward to seeing everyone at the next council meeting. Take care. Bye-bye.
All right, thank you. So, um, the, um, I, I just wanted to hear a little bit from, uh, the director from the health and, um, service department in reference to this new strand, um, from the COVID, and, and, and I would like to know how the city is preparing for that, uh, new strand. Um, just only from the news, um, I've heard that there is a case here in the United States, and I believe it's in California. I do not know of any other cases. I haven't heard. I'm only going by, um-
Or New York.
For New York. And so I just would like to hear something from the health, uh, officials, uh, and from Trenton in reference to this, because we have a lot of, uh, all of our schools are open. Um, you know, the people are do, uh, doing business as usual, and I, I just need the public to know what the city is doing in reference to this strand and how deadly this strand actually is.
Council President, um, thank you for the opportunity. Um, I will say with this new strand, that this new variant, as we know with vi- uh, with viruses, as they continue, they will mutate. So this is just a, another mutated, uh, variant, um, of COVID-19.
Dropping off. Good night, all.
Oh, that was rude.
Chef Iggy.
My Jesus. Um, so I will say with this, this new variant, it's, it's the same as the other variants that we have experienced. Um, and in preparation, we are still out here providing the, um, the primary and secondary, the first and second dose of all three vaccines, J and J, Pfizer, as well as Moderna. We also are doing the boosters as well as, um, the third, um, uh, dosage, uh, for the three, for Moderna, Pfizer, and J, well, for J and J is just the second, um, dose. And so we, um, have that, it's, it's actually being done every day of the week outside of this, the city. Uh, we also have the Trenton Health Team with Henry J. Austin that is providing, um, vaccines as well along, in collaboration with the school district. So we are in the schools, we are vaccinating, we are vaccinating, um, students and faculty as well. Um, and again, the same message that we have provided to, prior to this, um, strand, there were o- other strands that, it's just the same messaging, is that the three things, you know, you wa- um, wearing your mask, you wash, um, washing your hands, um, and you watching your distance, you know? And then if you feel sick, do not, um, come to work, do not come around individuals, um, and, you know, and get tested. So we are, we are testing as well. We have increased our testing, and I requested for additional, um, uh, tests for that, uh, through a grant, so we can have that and provide that as well. Um, and I'm trying to think what else that we have. We did see there was an outbreak in one school, um, and we have addressed that, um, and we're still following up. Uh, my health officer, Evette Graffy Cooper, and her team is following up with, uh, STEM Civic, because we did have an outbreak of sixth graders who tested, uh, positive for COVID, um, as well as some of the staff there as well. And we do have a, a meeting tomorrow morning with, uh, Trenton Public Schools, um, because we like to stay, um, in, in, um, partnership so we can see what the numbers look like or what they're experiencing in their schools and what it's like in the community. We're looking at positive cases from ten to fifteen a day. Um, and so we knew it's going to be an increase even prior to the strand. And so we're out there in the community, it's not just city officials, but we have other officials who are also, um, all the other agencies who are also out there in the community, um, that's also, um, assisting us, like Trenton Health Team, um, as well as Henry J. Austin and, um, and other entities. So we're out there, we're, um, really, um, putting the message out there about being vaccinated. We're on podcasts with Peterson Breaking News, other platforms. We're actually doing grassroots, we're out there in the community, just really trying to expand the message a little further, because we know that this is holiday season, we know more individuals are going to be, um, congregating together. You may have some agencies or some families who may want to get tested prior to, that's a wonderful thing. But I can just say, I know there are a lot of individuals who are not vaccinated. Um, and so we know we have to keep that in mind, and so we just keep pushing, um, the universal precautions, what they need to do, but we also encouraging about the vaccines, even for the children, because we, now we have the vaccines for the age from five to eleven. So we're pushing for that too, because we're seeing that there is an increase of our children who are being positive for COVID, and I'm being very transparent about that, because as adults, as, as, um, pillars in the community, we should really be trying to protect our children a little bit more. And so I was a little, um, taken back when I heard it was almost twenty sixth graders that tested positive for COVID in one school. Um, so this is something that we're really out there, but it's still, um, trying to change individuals' mindset and a narrative on, on, on this vaccine and what we need to do to move forward to protect our community. So we're out there, and we're just going to keep, um, relaying the same message. Nothing has changed, um, when it come down to the different strands. This is one that came from South Africa, and it hasn't been, um, noted here. Um, and so, but we always like to be prepared as opposed to react to something like this. And so we're ahead of it, and we're staying, um, conscious of it and just watching and seeing how things roll out. And every day, we are on calls with the county and with the state and stand abreast of any outbreaks in any other municipality or state. You have any other questions for me, Council President? Hello?
Council President?
I think she's on mute.
I, I was, I was steady talking, and I was on mute. Please forgive me. So thank you, doctor. I'm, I'm very concerned, because as I go through the stores, no one is social distancing, no one has a mask on.
Yes.
All of the bodegos, none of, none of them are using gloves, they're preparing food with their bare hands. It, it's just a mess here in the city. So I, I just think that that's an area that, um, needs to, uh, uh, some attention needs to be given. Um, I, I hope that people understand. You know, I hear a lot of people, uh, saying, oh, I've been vac- vaccinated, but yet and still, I have about ten or fifteen people that I know that were vaccinated, that have come down with the strand. The, the, the social distancing and the mask is important, and the, the use of the gloves when preparing people's food, but none of that is taking place now. Everybody has come very complacent, and, uh, we just need to step our game up with this health department, because what I'm seeing in these stores, in the, uh, Family Dollar Stores over here, and the, uh, corner bodegos, is, is really outrageous. But, um, thank you so much, uh, for your input, and, um-
Thank you.
I would, I would just like to thank all of the public for, uh, coming out this evening, and, um, hopefully we'll see you at the next council meeting. I, I always want to, uh, believe that when we, uh, talk about issues, that they're just not falling on dead ears, uh, on deaf ears. I hope that they're actually helping to improve, uh, the situation in the city. Again, I want to thank all of the directors for coming out this evening and all of the public. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Conlin, and, uh, have a blessed weekend, and we'll see you within two weeks. Thank you, Mr. Conlin. You may adjourn this meeting.
Uh, Council President is interested in motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Harrison. All in favor of adjourned?
All right.
That's enough. Any opposed? Seeing none opposed, we are adjourned at seven fifty-four P.M. Everybody get home safe if you're not already there.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody.